All right, welcome everyone to Austin ISD's Board Auditorium for the Joint Subcommittee Meeting. Happy holidays. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on AISD-TV, Channel 22 on Spectrum and Channel 99 on AT&amp;T U-verse. As the Board President for Austin ISD, I will serve as today's Presiding Officer and I call the meeting of the Joint Subcommittee to order at 11:43 a.m. So would you all please, would the electeds please say your names?
Nolita Lugo, At Large, Place 8.
Allison Alter, City Council, District 10.
Bridget Shea, Travis County. Bridget Shea, Travis County, Commissioner, Precinct 2.
Ryan Alter, City of Austin, District 5.
Jeff Trevillion, Travis County, Commissioner, Precinct 1.
Thank you, and myself, Arthi Se, President of the Austin ISD School Board. So we will start with public comment. Do we have any public comment? Nope, okay. All right, well, our first item is the approval of minutes for October 7, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, it's a motion by Mr. Trevill, Commissioner Trevillion, second by Commissioner Shea. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion is approved unanimously. So we got to start off with recognizing two of our very valuable members and dear friends of mine. These two members of the Joint Subcommittee do not run for reelection, but they have made such a lasting impact on the work that we do here in our city. Allison Alter and Nolita Lugo. So Allison Alter, yes. So Allison here has done so much for our students and families, championing our primetime out-of-school enrichment program, the Victory Tutorial Program, and parent support specialists. Though these programs do not operate in your district, you have pushed for increased funding and getting support in the city budget rather than have them apply for funding every year. That has made a huge difference for us. Councilmember Alter has also helped spearhead efforts to expand affordable, high-quality childcare. I know that has been a passion project for you for years and years and years, and I'm just so proud and amazed at the work that you've done in actually pulling this off. That is an amazing, amazing legacy. Yes. The passage of Travis County Prop A, we're going to hear about that more, but it definitely would have not happened without your leadership and your vision for doing what most people probably would have thought was impossible and making it possible. So thank you. You've also just been such an important advocate for education through Just Fund It. Your amazing children also being part of, you know, that effort, and your whole family really just being so important to the betterment of the City of Austin and Austin ISD. So just thank you, Councilmember Allison Alter. There's so much more I can say about you, but I'm going to miss you a lot. But now I will, oh, and you get some flowers too, for all your hard work. So these are for you. Thank you very much. There you go. We love you. And there will be a moment for everyone to say their piece, but now I got to move to my friend, Nolita Lugo. And y'all, I met Nolita in 2019 when there is a lot of tumultuous things happening in the district, and she is one of the most spirited activists I have ever met. And at that time, I was like, you need to run for school board. And you did, and you won, and it is because of your determination, your intelligence, your heart. You bring every piece of your soul to the work that you do. You've just been such a valuable member of the AISD School Board, my sister and the At Large position, the two of us. You've just, we've done so much good work together. You joined the Board four years ago and chaired our Board Audit Committee. Trustee Lugo is one of the most compassionate and pragmatic members of our Board, truly. She is a great champion for student success after high school, whether it be college, certification, or learning a trade. We know that you'll continue advocating for all of our kids, especially, you know, when we talk about students who typically don't get the attention they need, the kids who have been historically marginalized. You are always a reliable advocate in making sure that we are including them at the table when we make big decisions, and I appreciate that. Speaking of amazing advocates, while she's not with us today, I also want to acknowledge Ofelia Zapata, who rolled off the Board of Trustees in November but served on the Joint Subcommittee the last two years. Trustee Zapata has been, long been a champion of the collaborative work of elected leaders, community leaders, and the families and students of Austin, and we know she will continue her advocacy even off of the AISD Board. She was one of the original community members advocating for after-school programs for students that were discussed by this committee, and she has been an early supporter of Victory Tutors and Parent Support Specialists as a community member prior to being a trustee. We know she has been a critical piece of the Summer Youth Employment Program and a wonderful advocate with that, and she's really just continued to push our work as part of the Joint Subcommittee. So let's give trustee Lugo her flowers. Would any other Joint Subcommittee member like to comment?
I'd like to.
Yes, Commissioner Shea.
I'm going to start with Allison because I've had the pleasure of serving with Allison, and I really, you emphasized it, but I think it needs to be repeated often. The childcare, Affordable Childcare Initiative would not have happened without Allison's leadership. She pioneered, she pursued this and led it for several years, was sort of wandering in the wilderness, and got grant funding and lots of really smart, thoughtful people to help design it. And she navigated when I was pushing back and asking tough questions and saying, look, we have a really lean department at the county. This is a lot for us to manage, but you persisted and put together a phenomenal, community-wide effort. And so I just want to give you huge credit for this because this will be transformational. I think historians will look back at this time in our history and note how we literally altered the future for so many poor families whose kids would otherwise not have been able to access quality childcare. So huge props to you. I can't thank you enough, and we will owe you a debt of gratitude for generations. So thank you. And I remember Nolita when we were all kind of, I'll just say horrified at some of the proposals at the school board under a previous board and previous administration, and a bunch of us showed up and met each other at the school board meeting to object to what was going on, and I remember thinking at the same time, Nolita should run for office. I think we even said that, you should run for a school board. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for all of your service. You've been a huge advocate for the community and especially for people who are not able to advocate so well for themselves. So thank you. We owe you a debt of gratitude for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we could be here all day. But I will say quickly, you know, I have the privilege to serve with the other council member, Alter.
The other Alter.
On a daily basis and always just, whether it's the heart or the mind, right, Allison brings it all. You can always count that she's done her homework, that she, when she stands up to fight for something, it's because not only she's looked at it, but because she's passionate about it. And of course, in this setting, you know, the children of Austin, whether from a school perspective or childcare perspective, are going to be better off because of the work you've done. And so it's just been such a privilege. Wish it could have been longer than two years, but that's the way it goes. And I've gotten to know Nolita over the past couple of years, and just, you know, your work speaks for itself, the passion you have for it. And when we were, as an office, looking for someone who might continue to do some community outreach and help with the bond process that the city is going through, I thought, maybe Nolita will agree, and she did. She said...
One page.
That's right. She's got that down. So I just couldn't thank you enough for continuing to just invest in your community and be willing to give your time, which is, as, you know, a parent, I know how precious that time really is. So appreciate the work you have done and continue to do for all of Austin, but now especially for District 5.
So I often wondered how a sister and brother got on council at the same time. But I'll say this, you know, some of us, a lot of us, unapologetically support policies that help move communities out of poverty, that understand that we have not had equity, that we have not had fairness, and go to the mat when folks say, well, you know, I can't afford that, you know. Somebody who I know to be very affluent said, well, you're going to push me out of my house. Like, well, if you're losing your house, everybody's losing theirs. The point is, we are not losing our homes. We're making it possible for our youth to get secure learning care, for them to have after-school programs, because our kids that are in programs are not our kids that are in trouble, and for us to help follow them through school to work. The work that you've dedicated yourself to is honorable and necessary and often misunderstood, and I consider you both allies in the process for helping people who are only looking for access and opportunity to take care of themselves. So the work that you've dedicated your professional lives to, the time that you've dedicated, taken from your family, to serve the community, has truly done what we as public servants must try to do, which is serve the least of these. Serve those who, with the proper resources, will come and do positive things in our community, and that will build our community because we build it together. And you all have been a part of that process, and I'm so appreciative of you, and I'm sure that we'll find ways to work together as we go forward.
Well said. Thank you all. Thank you for your service, and you're welcome to give us public comment at any future JSC meeting.
I actually am.
Oh, good. Excellent, excellent. I love that. All right, so next on the agenda is Proposition A Implementation. And as we all know, there were two Prop As, but we are very happy that both Travis County and AISD Prop As were approved by our voters by quite a large margin. So that says something about the trust that the public has in our entities and the value that we place on education. So each entity has prepared a presentation, and we will start with Travis County. And we have Corey Darling, Director of Research and Planning Division, and Kathy McHors, the Planning Project Manager, both with Travis County Health and Human Services. So you've got the floor. Thank you.
Put your microphone on.
Yeah, green button, when it turns green.
Thank you. And then is the presentation pulled up? Thank you so much. Well, thank you so much for having us here today. As we just talked about, very exciting news that building on many years of work by providers, leaders, and advocates, the voters did approve the 2.5 cent tax rate increase that will generate $75 million for childcare and after-school and summer programming. And I've put this up here just so, this mirrors the ballot language, and the ballot language was designed so that we can make sure that in Travis County, we're implementing the various pieces of the program aligned with the county statute. So that, so in addition to providing the specific childcare and after-school programming, we'll also be able to look at this program as a workforce development and economic development program that supports the childcare centers and the system overall. So the four strategies that were included as part of the proposal will definitely serve as the baseline as we are developing and implementing the childcare and after-school and summer programming in Travis County. The largest component, of course, is expanding slots both for infants and toddlers, zero to three, and for after-school and summer programming for pre-K through 12th grade. The second strategy is expanding non-traditional hours care during mornings, evenings, and weekends. Strategy three is a kind of a strategy that includes several different components, things that overall expand the quality and the capacity of the system, things like entrepreneurial support, training and education for providers, and it also includes a gap funding measure that helps pay the difference between the existing subsidy slots and the new slots that will be created under this program. And then the fourth strategy is a business-government alliance for business contributions to childcare for their employees, and that those will be matched by the public Travis County funds. We are focused right now on several aspects of really building up for implementation. One of the really key things that we're doing is obviously going to need to hire staff to be able to carry out the county's work. This looks, and you'll see on this slide that there's some of the, some of the diagram has outlines around it, and in those departments, that's where we'll be hiring the staff. And so we'll be hiring HHS program staff, a manager, planners that will plan the program, a community engagement specialist, and also someone to support communication. We'll also be hiring staff to ensure checks and balances in the auditor's office, in our purchasing department, in the county's attorney's office, and in our finance department. So hiring staff around the county to be sure that we are, have the resources to implement this program. Another key startup step that we'll be focusing on is community engagement. We'll be, right now, we're planning listening sessions in early 2025. We will be getting additional feedback on the strategies and getting input from stakeholders to make sure we can have that input to inform program design. We are also working on the design for an advisory council, and the advisory council will be an important way that we are able to incorporate community voice into the planning and the implementation of these funds in an ongoing way. Finally, we're working on a communications plan. Right now, we're still calling it Prop A or the TRE, and so really important to think about what the name and the branding will be for the program, making sure that we're keeping stakeholders updated about the implementation, about these funds that they approved, and also, once services are available, making sure there's information about available services. We will be implementing the program using a phased approach during 2025 and 2026. We're doing this in two different ways. The first way is we're looking at near-term investments, and so this is exploring how we can expand existing county contracts to begin providing services in 2025. And while we're doing that, we're also working on the longer-term planning to design programs and then be able to procure services in the four strategies. And we expect that work will start now, but the services will begin in 2026. And we'll do this through sort of a several-step phase. The first is looking at refining the program design using the outlines that have already been created through the planning process. We're doing a lot of work to talk to other communities so we can learn from their successes and their lessons learned. And there we're also, of course, seeking community input on what the programs need to look like to really meet the needs of families and the providers. Once we do all that, we'll be seeking approval of any program policies from our commissioners' court. And then we'll begin planning for procurement. We'll develop the scopes of work for the services we're seeking to purchase, and then we'll go through the process, working with our purchasing office to release the solicitations, to evaluate those solicitations, to select our vendors, and then, of course, negotiate and execute contracts. And we'll be looking both for an administrator to oversee kind of the overarching childcare program and do the day-to-day work on the ground for that program, including enrolling providers, doing eligibility for families, making the payments. We'll also be looking for service providers and a third-party evaluator. Once a program is up and running, we really hope that this will be a program that is, goes under a continuous quality improvement process. So we're really looking to make sure that the project, the program meets the needs of the community in an ongoing way. The way that it will operate is that selected contractors will be responsible for the day-to-day operations. County staff will oversee and manage the contracts. As I mentioned, we'll have a third-party evaluator who will evaluate the programs and be able to report back outcomes to the community as well as the commissioners' court. And as I mentioned, we'll really look to all work together to maximize our resources, identify gaps in services, prevent duplication, and also refine the strategies as needed because we know that the needs in the community right now might change, you know, down the road as federal policy changes, as other things shift. So we'll be looking at how we can continuously adapt and meet those needs. And our last slide is sort of the 10,000-foot look at what this looks like over the next two years. As I mentioned, right now, we're really focusing on staffing, staffing up so that we can have the resources we need to fully do this work. So our target is to have staff hired by, in the beginning of the year, by April 2025. We're looking to implement our near-term investments that I mentioned by expanding current contracts by the summer of 2025. We hope that our community input process will be completed, analyzed, we'll have all the research we need to be able to make the final policy recommendations and seek commissioners' court approval by the summer. That will allow us to begin releasing solicitations for services in fall 2025. And that process does tend to take between nine to 12 months, the entire process, and so we hope that we would then have our first contracts in place by next summer, June 2026. We would be focusing first on the childcare slots and perhaps some other components as well, but that's one that we know we would be prioritizing. And then our target is to have all contracts in place for all four strategies by the end of 2026. So that is kind of a summary of how we are looking to work over the next months and how to implement this program, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. So any questions for our presenters? Yes.
Can you talk a little bit more about the goal for the near-term investments? I know there's going to be a lot of impatience, I think, to get the program started. We will have a budget starting very soon. So can you just give us a little bit more information about the thinking on the near-term investments and utilizing existing contracts?
Yes, thanks, Commissioner Shea. But right now, what we're doing is we're exploring the contracts that the county has in childcare as well as several that we have in after-school and summer programming, and working through what it would take both on the county side and what it would look like for those providers to be able to expand the services that they are currently providing for the county, but just provide more of them. So that's what that's looking like.
Any other questions? Councilmember.
Similar in that vein that kind of popped in my head, looking at that timeline, you've got two years, so about $150 million worth of revenue, not necessarily full build-out, so not $150 million worth of spend. Obviously, the city has a number of childcare contracts. I imagine AISD, similar story. So when y'all are looking in just that near-term timeline, are you looking solely at county contracts, or are you looking at, and even beyond the bodies here, other maybe private providers to, I've already heard from people of, you know, when are we going to see results from this? And if it's years down the road, you know, that's, there is a lot of impatience. So I'm just curious how y'all are going to address that.
I'll take that if that's okay. So the contracts that we're talking about are with other organizations other than the city and the school district. With the city and the school district, because we don't have existing programs in this space, we would have to take the time to design what we would do with you, how would that work, put it into an ILA, and as you know, government works pretty slow. And so what we want to do is not hold on to money for very long. So what we want to do is really target the ones that we already have in place that have scopes of work and be able to implement those as quickly as possible. And those are the ones that have a pretty big impact right now, where we can serve thousands of people very quickly. So we want to put those to work, and those will be the priority, put them to work right away because it takes a lot less to do that. And then we would start working in negotiations with our other partners like AISD and the city to see what else we can do together. But we really need to prioritize on how can we get the money on the ground, helping families as soon as possible, and that's with the ones that are already in place.
Can you say a little bit more about some of those contracts? I think I'm familiar with some of them, but just to give us an example, and I realize serving people in the county also benefits people in the city and in AISD, but if you can just give us some idea of some of those existing contracts.
Well, our largest childcare provider in the county is Workforce Solutions, and we have an existing contract with them. And so we need to, we are still exploring whether we can do this or not, whether we can put these funds towards that ILA and still make a few changes. So as we explore that, that really would be the biggest bang for the buck in putting people, giving people the services as soon as possible, but there's still a lot to explore in that area.
And that is one entity that has a very large waitlist for people who are trying to get childcare services.
A large waitlist, and they can serve thousands of people if we can, if we can make that work. So that's our priority.
Yes.
Thank you, and I want to thank Corey and Pilar and all the staff at Travis County for the work that you've begun and the work that you will be doing on making this a reality. I wanted to just piggyback on what Pilar just said with Workforce Solutions. You know, one of the strategies is topping up the amount that we're paying for the subsidized slots currently, which is happening through Workforce Solutions. And we have the childcare study, which says, you know, how much we should be paying for the cost of quality. So they have to work through the legal steps to see whether the existing contract, for instance, would allow them to just right away add money to what they're paying for their subsidized rates, which would help those childcare providers have more leeway and more flexibility, those that have already decided to take on subsidized slots, to do that, and then there would be the option, you know, potentially to add more kids to what we're covering through that same ILA. But I think it's a question of working through the procurement and the legal issues, and I would just encourage our county commissioners, I think the two of you are not on the committee that oversees that from the commission, but anything that you guys can do to help facilitate, you know, navigating the legal issues, navigating the procurement issues, and navigating the staffing issues so that they can staff up quickly since we have dedicated funding and you don't have to find funding to the extent that those processes can be prioritized and accelerated on your end from an administrative. And I'm not at the county, so I don't know how that works. I just know that for any entity, that's an issue, but when we want to and can, we can lean in and move some of those obstacles, and I think this would be a great, great place to do that. The other thing that I wanted to add is that our Children's Funding Project cohort is still there and willing and able and interested in supporting the work as we move forward, as is the national organization, and they have implementation support that they will be providing directly with the county staff as well. And just want to indicate that from our conversations, and Ms. Hayden Howard can reiterate this, but from our conversations with the city, Economic Development Department now has purview over childcare. They're very interested in helping and assisting at any stage where that help is needed, so please do not hesitate to call on Cindy Gammay and Catherine Sobel, who are leading up that one. who are leading up that work at the city. So, thank you. And thank you to the Commissioners' Court for having the courage to put this on the ballot.
And I do want to acknowledge that you've already hired Kathy McHorris, who brings enormous experience from her work at Success by Six. So, and I think your schedule had you hiring new staff by the first quarter of next year. So they're on that program to get moving as fast as possible. But I really want to thank Kathy for all her work, and I'm delighted that you're now with Travis County.
Thank you.
Yes, without Kathy, this would not have happened. Kathy's amazing.
Atias.
So, very much appreciate the presentation. The question I have is around the development of the Advisory Committee. I didn't see on the milestone schedule kind of when that would actually come to fruition. And then just wanting to know if there's a structure that the staff or the county commissioners have in mind regarding the size, placements, you know, strategic partners. So anything you could share at this point would be helpful.
So, I was very shocked when I came to work for the county as to how slow city and county government work. We recently established a public health commission, which is doing wonderful work, but it took us about a year to establish. And so, again, we have to find ways to get work done immediately and at the same time work towards putting that advisory council in place. So that work is being done. We're still researching how other advisory councils for this type of work are functioning in other cities so that we can recommend a good, you know, format for that. But in the meantime, the richest advice that we can get is, how does this impact the main stakeholders of the program? And as we design the program, what do we need to consider? So in lieu of a formal advisory council, what we're thinking we will do is we will have a large community engagement sessions where we can bring in stakeholders, and we can pose very specific policy questions, process questions, and have those stakeholders advise us and take a lot of that and consider it as we continue to design. Then from there, narrow that down to a smaller number of stakeholders that will continue to design, at the same time working on establishing a formal advisory council. And then hopefully having an advisory council. Do you have an estimated time?
I don't think yet, no, we don't.
Yeah. So having an advisory council within a year, six months, would be fantastic. I seriously doubt that we can make that happen with so many stakeholders that are interested in this. And so I think that it'll be great to bring as many stakeholders together in an informal manner so that we can gain their advice and their experience and their input until a formal body can be established.
I have just a couple of quick questions. So along those lines, actually, one of my questions was around the listening sessions. And as I'm listening to y'all talk about the, you know, plans for the advisory committee, and you talk about stakeholders, is that primarily providers? Or is it providers plus families? Okay.
What we're envisioning is so far, you know, what we think might be it, but this can evolve as we listen. We believe that it needs to be, at the very least, providers, parents, the, we've invited employers, what we want to invite employers. And then, of course, the city. We want the city to be in the advisory council, some county people as well.
School districts.
School district would be great. So there's a long list of type of stakeholders, and we have to really narrow that down to a functioning committee. So it can't be too many. So those are the, you know...
Initial starting point for the listening sessions. And then a quick question around the third-party evaluator. Are those metrics already, like, are the, okay, so y'all are still developing what the evaluation will look like?
Correct, yeah, that's another piece that I didn't put up there, but we do need to also be planning the evaluation. I think that's a piece that we would be getting input from stakeholders around and looking at what we exactly will want to include, what we want to measure, how our community knows this would be successful.
Right.
And then that would be put into a scope of work for the third-party evaluator.
Yeah. Do y'all have some initial ideas? So for example, you know, if you're looking at providers, you know, the level of training and certification of the individuals that are looking after kiddos, turnover rates, enrollment and usage, you know, are people re-upping, you know, that sort of thing, I imagine. I'm seeing you nod your heads, I don't know if, like, so the camera's not getting it, but I'm seeing it, so yeah.
I think all of those things, I think we can also build on what a lot of other communities have measured as well as what are, and those are definitely some of the things.
Great. And then, yeah, one last plug. Yeah, I am so grateful to all the individuals who made this happen, and then to the voters who are allowing us to do this great work. One of the things that I'm hopeful to see is, you know, how this partnership between the city, the county, and the school district can also lead toward, you know, more families really looking at public schools as the option, right? I think I can kind of talk a lot about that, but I won't. So yeah, I'm just really looking forward to the work that you guys are going to accomplish. And thank you so much.
Thank you. I will add, in regards to the evaluation, we, you know, all of our contracts contain performance indicators, but we don't want to do the things like, we don't want to do things the way we've always done them. So that's why we want to get an external evaluator that has experience in this particular field to bring to us performance measures that we haven't thought about. And so we'll add those to each of our contracts. So we hope that we'll learn a lot from a professional evaluation company and make it better. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. This conversation prompted a couple other things that might be useful just to surface. So when we built the proposition, we had about 10% for administration and 2% for evaluation. So we all along expected that the county would have to staff up and that there would be time spent with that. And we built in plans for evaluation. The amount of money that we have for that may be more than we need sort of for that. And we also have some national folks who might be able to help us and step in and help guide some of that piece. So we always knew that we would get money coming in in January. We don't have an inflation builder in the process. So if you end up with some money that is from the beginning of it, that doesn't get spent right of way, that then provides you a cushion moving forward. It also allows for there to be some capacity building in terms of conversion of classrooms or something. If we find as we move forward that those are expenses that need to happen in order to unleash the capacity, it gives you some flexibility with that funding to be able to do those kinds of things. It's also just not a bad idea to have something of a reserve available for any program and what those levels are, et cetera, that county's going to have to figure out within their own needs and parameters. With respect to the advisory board, we've shared some information from our work, but I will also add that Raleigh-Austin, our economic development corporation, has a very interesting model for that advisory and how they're using the advisory board that you may want to look at. And one thing that often gets missed in this process when we're talking about the slots, which is the key strategy, is we did not constrain other than that the slots have to go to indigent families, or at least they have to be indigent when they first get the slot. We didn't constrain how that process has to work. So I believe, and I would encourage AISD, since you're here, to think about what the slots could do for you, that we could then be leveraging additional capacity even beyond those slots for the community. And this can be a conversation that happens with ACC. It's a conversation that happens with AISD. It can happen with goodwill. It can happen with the YMCA. You know, if you knew you had, I don't know, 10 slots for early childhood care, which is zero to three, that you had a dedicated stream of money, how many classrooms would you be able to feel comfortable that you could open to serve your families or to serve your staff if you knew you didn't, you had some of your uncertainty taken out because you had those guarantees? So those conversations, we have to figure out all the legal parts of that. But we are not constrained by the ballot language alone to think about how to use these slots to leverage other programs that we have in the community. But we have to have those conversations. And absent the voters voting, those conversations haven't fully happened. And they also have to go through all of the legal steps and the creative process that has to happen at the county. But I would encourage you, if you have thoughts on what this could mean for you, there's nothing to stop for you from going to the county and saying, "We have this idea, and we could do this. And if we did this, we could bring, you know, double that amount of slots or triple that amount of slots to the community." Because there's still a lack of slots for people who can pay for it that we have. So I just want to encourage us to think creatively, how to work with this program with other workforce and economic development and childcare programs that we have existing. And then the final thing that I want to mention, that is something that we also need to navigate, is that we built a really, really strong coalition, but we also built a coalition that went from zero to 18, which we didn't have before in our community. And we don't want to lose that coalition. And some of the issues for early childcare differ from after-school. Some of them are the same. But I think those who were deeply involved feel there's a strength in that continuum. And that as we move forward as a community, and it's not just on the county, we need to be thinking, how do we build on this coalition in lots of different frameworks so that we can really take people from zero to 18 in our community and set them up for success? And that path is one where we need everyone to step up and recognize that we need to be thinking about this continuum and that we have an opportunity. Other cities are looking, other counties, places are looking to us. And we have an opportunity to build that coalition across that spectrum. But it won't happen by happenstance. It's only going to happen if we set a goal and intention to build it out.
Announcing Allison for Chair of the Advisory Committee.
I would just like to make just a clarification from something that Councilwoman Alter said. Just, we were very precarious about this at the county. The county has established limitations to only serve the indigent. And when you were speaking, you were talking about other groups have not established that limit, but the county has. So it's just important that we all understand that, that the county's tax collection for this particular purpose has to be used for only the indigent who's serving individuals. And, but I understand what you're saying. As we increase the capacity and of not only the number of kids that can be served, but the capacity of providers to serve them better, then that improves the capacity for other populations. And so thank you for saying that, but I just have to be very careful to make sure the message is clear. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Any other questions? Thank you for the excellent, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to offer, at any point along the way, if you need additional support, now that you have more stability amongst the superintendents in Travis County, there have been some new seats that have been filled. You know, we are, AISD is coordinating a lot of, to ensure alignment within the school districts within Travis County. So at any point, if you need help convening or coordinating or communicating, please use us as an avenue.
Thank you. Yeah, great, great to hear that. All right, so now we will move on and here, thank you all very much. Excellent, and congratulations Kathy on your new position. As I was reading it, I was like, oh, wait, she's with Travis County now, great. All right, so next we are going to hear from AISD, from Athias Segura, Superintendent, and Jacob Reach, the Chief Officer of Governmental Relations and Board Services on AISD's Prop A. So, floor is yours.
Thank you so much. And AISD TV, if you wouldn't mind bringing up our PowerPoint, thank you so much. So first, I want to start with a heartfelt thank you for our community, this joint subcommittee, and everyone else who helps support Austin ISD. Oh, now I gotta, okay, it's going. And our Prop A election. So as you can see here, our election passed by 58%. And this was a tax rate increase election. The state calls it a VADER, but we also refer to it as Prop A. And I just want to share a little bit more information about some of the school district votes around the state. So as I mentioned, ours was a tax rate increase, a VADER election. There were 48 districts in the state who went out for some type of tax rate election, including our neighbor, Maynor. 20 of those districts ended up passing, which is a 42% pass rate overall. And kind of an interesting data point, the average yes vote for a VADER election was 49%. And so you can see AISD really did well with that 58%. And we know that we owe that to this great community, our great partnerships with our leaders that really had faith in us to be good stewards of this funding for our kids in AISD. There were also bond elections. AISD did not have a bond election, but we want to share some of that data as well. There were 34 districts in the state who had a bond election. And you can have more than one proposition for a bond election, just like the city and the county can. So there were a total of 57 propositions. 31 of those passed for a total of 54%. So out of those 34 districts, 19 passed at least one. And again, I want to highlight our neighbor and friends up at Round Rock, also in Travis County. They had four proposition elections, they passed three of those. And the three that they passed, they had just as strong of a passing rate as we did. Unfortunately, they did not pass their bond for an athletic stadium, which has been pretty common across the state. When you look at what are the bond elections that are passing, those that are looking at repair or redoing buildings do fairly well. Those focused on athletic stadiums traditionally have not passed in the state. Overall, about half of the money that was requested through bonds was passed. But about three of those that unfortunately did not pass really accounted for the bulk of that. Houston ISD had a $4.4 billion bond, Frisco just above $1 billion, and Northwest just below $1 billion. So those three alone counted for more than half of all of the requests for those bonds. So our proposition brought in an additional, about $41 million annually to AISD. We have already started the work, and I'm going to go through a chart in just a moment, in making sure that we've made those market adjustments that we've committed to. So that's increased to some of our teachers and staff salaries, and I'll go through that in more detail. We also set aside a little over $3 million for additional supports in the district. And that was focused on three different things. First, that's continued commitment for special education. Since we have been under the agreed order with TEA, Superintendent Segura and our board have made supporting special education kind of priority one A. And so we put a lot of focus into that to make sure that we have the staff that we need so that our kids are being evaluated on time, getting served properly at their campus, and that they have those qualified special education teachers in their classroom. So we will spend some additional funding to support special education. We are also going to create content interventionists for Austin ISD. So these are academic specialists, you know, they may be in reading, they may be in math, they may be in both, but they do that really targeted support for our students. So the teacher, of course, provides the main instruction for all of our kids. And our teachers also do a wonderful job of ensuring that that instruction is catered for every individual student's need in their classroom. But sometimes we do have some students that just need a little bit more support. Maybe it's in the classroom, maybe it's a pullout from the classroom, maybe it's in combination with that teacher. But that's where that content interventionist will come in and help provide that additional support for that student to make sure that they're staying up on grade level with their peers. Lastly, we put some funding aside for mental health. And we have already made two commitments. That is to increase our mental health supports in our police team, because they are typically one of the, when there is a mental health outcry, they are one of the groups that has reached out for that. And then also in our counseling team, our mental health support. And then we want to continue to see how we can provide some additional support through that. And then $20 million of that is set aside to help offset our overall deficit, which will help us long-term, well, and short-term. Because that's some of the, you know, when we're looking at how we can address our deficit, that's $20 million that we don't need to take from our schools now, or take from the systems that we're providing for our schools. So we're really thankful for the work of our community, of our trustees advocating for this. And I know that all of our elected officials really help. And I know that all of our elected officials really helped advocate for the need of Austin students with this. So thank you for that. What you see here is a little bit of our timeline. So of course, the election was on November fifth. We have already started mailing out. As a matter of fact, I believe all staff should have already received their compensation notification on how this affected their overall pay. And that either, either went into effect immediately or it will. I believe our next paycheck is next Friday, December thirteenth, thank you. On December thirteenth. And that's actually retroactive all the way back to the beginning of the year. So that was another commitment that we made for our staff, that if this passes, it won't just start in December, it'll be retroactive to the start of the year so that it'll be made whole for that entire year. We are going to continue the discussions on our content interventionist, hoping to start rolling those out next semester. And then also some of those other supports that I just mentioned are rolling those out next semester. So I want to briefly talk about our market adjustments. Eighty-five percent of all of our regular benefit eligible staff, so that means more than the halftime staff, receive some type of market adjustment. And one thing that I'll call out on that is that we also made an intentional investment into classified. And Austin ISD, just like our city and county counterparts, we're almost kind of competing with one another now at this point on some of our classified pay raises. But not only did we raise to twenty dollars last year, but then we did an additional twenty-five cent increase for all classified. So whether they saw a market increase or not, we ensured that every classified staff saw at least a twenty-five cent increase. We also saw average increases for some of our hardest to staff positions and most necessary staff, we're talking about special education, with our speech language pathologist and some of our other licensed support in special education, average increase of about ten percent. And then what you see right there in the middle is the average increase of bands for teachers. And if Superintendent Segura would, would show a graph, and I wish I, I had the graph, I'll try and make it with my hands as best as I can. You know, when you typically look at a teacher's salary, honestly, it's kind of flat. You know, they, whether you've started in one year and then twenty years later, you know, the, the increase is there, but it's not, it's not a, you know, it's not a sharp line. It's a fairly flat line. And we really wanted to ensure that we're making that line just a little bit more sharp, that we're really increasing pay for our teachers, especially those later years. We've, we've heard jokes and not ones that we really appreciate, but some of our neighboring districts who will say that they let us train the teachers and then they hire them once they were trained because they were offering a little bit more later, even though we were all competitive at the beginning. Now that we can be a little bit more competitive with our teacher pay later in their career, we really know that that's going to mean more teachers staying in the classroom and staying in AISD, which is exactly what we want to see. And we're really excited about seeing the long terms effect of that.
If I could just ask you one quick question. I like that you show the, the averages for increase. I like that you show who will be impacted. Sometimes what the public misses, sometimes what we are asked is, so how does that get to the stakeholder? What is it, what does the, what does the kid get that he didn't have before this? What are we allowed to do? Where are we allowed to serve that we weren't able to serve before? So we, yes, we should compensate our teachers more and better. My parents were teachers, I understand. At, at the end of the day, though, folks are saying, how is this going to impact my kids at the classroom level? Or at the campus level?
Well, I think one of the things that our trustees and I talk about since the moment I came on board was this fact that the success for our students in the improved learning environment, it, it's, it's founded in our teachers. We, we can't talk about it enough. We, we have to treat our teachers as professionals. We have to recognize that without them, the system and our students will not get what they need, especially our most historically underserved students. And so in twenty-twenty-three, we made an aggressive investment in AISD, in ourselves, in educators. We did a seven percent raise, we increased stipends. And this year, we were able to maintain a ninety-seven-point-four percent staffing rate, which is much higher than anywhere else in the region. And then you think about the correlation of principals to superintendent and stability. So two years ago, we hired over twenty principals. This last year, we hired six. And all of them were known to the organization. And so this stability allows for the professional development, the relationship with the student, the relationship with the families, all of those things to really be reinforced and, and support our students. And I think what's really great about what we're able to do is at the end of the day, our resources have to be distributed equitably. And so we are building tools into the system to ensure that that occurs across all things, whether it's operations, finance, talent and strategy, all of it. And so this is a huge step in that direction. But at the end of the day, it has a meaningful impact on how we serve our students in Austin ISD.
I, I think it is important for people to know that. I think it's critically important that we're able to demonstrate how, how our students will be better served. As we talk about Robin Hood and what it means to Austin ISD, I think we have to talk about it in the context of how our students are served or how we can't serve them because of the system that is in place. So I, I just want to make sure that people understand. Want to make sure that they can, that, that they can see down at the campus level how it's, how we're being impacted. But how our overall system is, is, is frankly terrible and does not allow us to build, to build the staffing levels that are necessary to serve the kids we're seeing.
And, and Commissioner, one of the things that I'll tell you, there's a story about Webb Middle School, and I'm sure Michael Coyle wouldn't mind me sharing this. In years past, you know, when you think about what principals and administrators have to work through as they staff up for the coming school year, it is frantic, right? If you don't have the supports centrally. And so years past, you know, you had administrators really trying to find those individuals to bring them into the classroom. And a couple of things are going to happen. A, it may not always be the best fit. Two, it may not be the educator who has that tenured experience. Or three, it takes away from the planning that's required to actually launch a successful school year. And so when having conversations with some of our campuses that have really seen an increase in stability, Webb Middle School being one of them, you know, he'll, Michael Coyle, our principal there, will tell you, you know, he was almost fully staffed before the first day of summer. And when you think about what that affords the school in the summertime as they plan professional development, as they think about the student needs, as they think about the master schedule, it is a game changer. So all of this is tied together. And that's just one kind of small tangential example of just creating space in the system so that our, you know, educators can do what they do best. And, and so I appreciate that comment, but there are many, many other stories like that. And I think we need to do a better job of communicating them out, but sometimes it can be a little nuanced and we lose the connection. So I appreciate the comment. So is it in the presentation? Okay, sorry.
And I just wanted to piggyback off what you just said, Superintendent. The, at our next board meeting, which is next Thursday, we're actually going to have a little board retreat. So if people who really want to get into the weeds, we have identified, or the superintendent has identified six campuses that have the highest need. And we are tracking them extremely closely so that we don't have another Mendez Middle School situation. And, and what the administration has done is, and they've sort of pioneered an approach to ensure that, that we are measuring the inputs into those campuses and they are getting the resource allocations needed to ensure that those campuses remain fully staffed, that they're getting good teachers, that, you know, there are key factors that are really highly leveraged when it comes to student outcomes. And so as a board, our job is to, you know, track that. His job is to make sure it happens. And so we really are going to be going into that more deeply through the budget angle next Thursday. But, but I hear you in this Prop A passing. I can't even tell you how meaningful that is to help us actually actualize this vision. So thank you. Yes.
First of all, congratulations on, on getting Prop A through. We're going to segue to intergovernmental relations. And, and I appreciate everything you're doing with this money. And obviously, the community supports it. But I can never let a conversation go on these investments without recognizing that we are spending more money, sending more money out of our school system than we're able to spend in, even as we have dire needs within our, our school district. And so as we'll segue into the intergovernmental, appreciate everything you're doing to make the best use of this money. But I can only imagine if you got to use all of the money that the voters were just taxed for what we could be doing for our kids in our community. And, and I just think we have to make sure that people recognize the limits that are placed on our school district, the, the, the taxes that we have to endure, you know, from the state property tax that we have for our schools at this point in time.
Councilwoman Alter, that's, I very much appreciate that comment. And what I don't want to leave this meeting without saying is that there are still cuts that we have to move through and navigate through. And we were very honest with, about this before we even started the proposition A process. But those cuts now don't have to be as deep. And we are able, you know, to, to create a strategy that keeps us from having to encroach on the classroom. And so we have, part of the work that we'll be doing in the work session is just getting additional feedback from our trustees to ensure that we're aligned. But there's certainly efficiencies to be gained around P E M's reporting, master schedule development, portable reduction strategies. There's a lot of efficiencies when you're an organization of this size. And so we now have a little bit of breathing room to get through that difficult work that will then continue to drive down our expenses and cross our fingers, hopefully in the next legislative session, which is what we're about to talk about. Some funding will be released to help ensure that those things that are truly impactful, adversely impactful to our students, don't have to take place, right? Because we'll, we'll be past that. So thank you for the comment, very much appreciate it.
So that sounds like a good segue to our next, oh, did you have one?
Yeah, I really just want to acknowledge, again, congrats on your Prop A. But I want to acknowledge the enormous work that you've done with a heavy foot from the state. The, the threats around the middle school and the work that you've had to do there, but also the difficulty that so many teachers and staff have been working under. But you've stabilized that, you've made an investment in trying to have your teacher pay keep pace. And I, I think it's worth repeating those stats. You did, you were losing a lot of experienced teachers, but you've turned that around. And I think it's really important for the public to know that. And also, when people get frustrated with property taxes, which are high, they need to be communicating with the state legislature because I think this was true even before your Prop A. But aren't we the second largest funder of all public schools in Texas, behind the state of Texas? So our taxpayers in Austin are the second highest funder of all public schools in Texas because of the way the legislature has structured school finance. And it's profoundly unfair. No, it's very intentional. It's very intentional. And people really need to understand that so they can focus their communication on, on the state legislature. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Shea. And I guess as I close out here, I shared with the trustees, I think probably via text, the screen capture of the wire transfer back in the spring. And it was six-hundred-and-ninety-nine million dollars that was transferred out to the state via recapture. And, and again, it's a system, it's, it's something that, you know, legislators will have to address. But, you know, we're hopeful that increase in public funding is what the legislature will consider, which is what I think we're about to talk about here for too long.
Thank you, yes. Increasing the basic allotment is a mechanism by which we will be able to reduce recapture. And we're going to hear so much more about that and more next, which is, we have, we're going to have presentations from each of our three entities. And we're going to have the City of Austin with Rick Ramirez, the Intergovernmental Relations Deputy Officer, followed by Travis County Julie Wheeler. Welcome. And followed by our beloved Edna Ramon Butts to talk about our, our legislative agenda. So we will start with City of Austin, Rick Ramirez. Please begin.
Well, thank you very much. If we could get our slides up. Hello there.
That's why you're beloved.
Yeah. Well, thank you all very much for asking me to, to join you all today. I'm very excited to talk about our legislative program. Believe it or not, we are less than forty days away from the start of the legislative session, I know. But on, on the good side, we're less than a hundred and eighty days from the end of the next legislative session. So that's, that's a plus. Today, I'll, I'll be going over-
Sorry, right before, we were, we were just whispering here that we would love for you to introduce yourself. I'm sorry, I forgot to ask you to do that. Yes, tell us a little about you and then launch in.
Yes, so my name is Rick Ramirez. I'm the Deputy Intergovernmental Relations Officer for the City of Austin. And again, thank you very much for asking me to join you. I will be going over our legislative program. We'll be bringing both the draft state legislative program and the federal legislative program to City Council next Thursday. So we'll be talking about some draft position statements that will be brought up to them. I'll talk about our new legislative team. We have a lot of change at the City of Austin in the Intergovernmental Relations Office. So we'll talk a little bit about that and I'll give you some next steps as well. Okay, so our legislative agenda is developed by our mayor and council, and it directs the way that the Intergovernmental Relations Office works in the Capitol. Our language is intentionally broad and it allows us to have some flexibility when we go to the Capitol. There's many different bills and they're filed in different ways. And this broad language allows us to be, have some flexibility on how we react. And we couldn't do it without our departments. Our departments are, are industry experts. They help us to analyze the bills. We have bill reviewers in almost every single department throughout the city. They help us understand what the impacts would be for our residents and how we provide services and whether or not those impacts would come with additional cost. So when we're developing the legislative agenda, we take into consideration a couple of various factors. We speak with our legislators, we talk to the delegation, talk about their priorities and, and what they want to accomplish next legislative session. We also pay attention to the rest of the legislature to find out what they're talking about during the interim and how that might impact us. We measure and balance our needs, our wants and our nice-to-haves. We talk about the political environment and how current events might impact what's going to happen at the legislative session. A good example of that would be the recent storms in Houston that left many people, especially CenterPoint Energy customers, out of electricity for quite a while, which means that we had a lot of interim session hearings about electric reliability and that could have some impacts on Austin energy. And then obviously, we just need to be able to expect the unexpected. There's so many different variables that happen with a system that has so many individuals and different personalities. And so we're nice and flexible and ready to react. So at a glance, our legislative agenda is mostly left unchanged. There are a few substantive changes that I'll go over in, in a little while. But our legislative program is very much like any other legislative program for any other city throughout the state. We like to be able to preserve local decision-making, the city council's ability to have control over zoning and ordinances and have local regulations and local lawmaking ability. We also want to be able to protect the city's financial resources and make sure that there's, we oppose any kind of unfunded mandates or any legislation that would impact the fiscal health of our city. On community health and safety, we want to be able to support healthcare access and just protect the health, well-being and safety of our citizens. And then we'd like to protect Austin's beautiful natural resources and encourage sustainability and invest in critical, critical infrastructure projects. We did have some substantive changes that will be bringing to City Council on Thursday. These substantive changes, though, are informed by council resolutions that council has made throughout the last two years since we adopted the last legislative agenda. So these have all been kind of already vetted through City Council. In, in terms of public safety, we did add an item for support for forensic science operations. In particular, there is talk about supporting for paths of- In particular, there is talk about supporting for paths of certification for apprenticeship programs for forensic science. We are hearing that there is going to be a bill related to that, and we will be supporting that. And then, the last legislative session, there were a lot of bills related to fentanyl testing. There was a bill that would have had Austin PD test every single drug confiscated for fentanyl, which would have been very expensive and very onerous, so we'll be watching for that as well. In addition, there's going to be bills related to flood insurance, and so we have a position statement related to supporting funding to reduce the risk to lives and property. Also, to be able to make sure that flood insurance is more affordable and allow for it to be able to be paid on a monthly basis. There's also a new position statement regarding drone use. Last legislative session, there was a bill that would have banned cities from being able to buy drones that had components that were from certain countries. Unfortunately, there are, many of the drones that we use have to have components that are made from certain countries, so that would have essentially grounded our entire drone fleet. Going on to homelessness, we have been speaking with legislators all through the interim about homelessness and have been talking about solutions where the state would be able to come in and have some funding for that. We've been talking about data sharing for homelessness as well. And so, we expect there will be quite a few bills on this topic. This is going to be one of the largest topics of the legislative session as we move forward. City Council also passed an equal rights ordinance, and so that's part of the legislative agenda as well. We're also including support for responsible use of artificial intelligence. And again, on drone use, that's not just for public safety, but we have many departments that use drones. And so, being able to make sure that we have access to drones for all different types of uses is going to be very important. And then, on transportation, we added a position statement that specifically called out Project Connect and our Future 35. That's the cap-and-stitch program. We want to be able to support legislation that has funding for those types of projects. In addition, there's a lot of other priorities that we have. We have a position statement that is opposing super preemption is what we called it. Y'all might have recalled the Death Star Bill that was passed last legislative session, HB 2127. Recently, actually, just the first day of filing, there was a bill that would have created the District of Austin and basically do away with our municipal government. I call that super-duper preemption, and so we're definitely going to be opposing that as we did last time around. There's also bills that have already been filed on community advocacy. That's what we, that's the term we use whenever we talk about taxpayer-funded lobbying. There's been bills that would bar not just cities, but counties and school districts from being able to hire professional communicators to help them navigate through the legislative session. Again, homelessness is going to be an issue. Land use preemption had a lot of discussion during the interim legislative session, so we'll be watching that as well. And then, there's also been bills that have already been filed on DEI programs. On the federal side, it mirrors much of what we have on the state side as well. We do, we included the LGBTQIA or DEI agenda item to the federal agenda as well. On the climate crisis, we wanted to make sure that we have a new administration that's coming in to the White House. We wanted to make sure that in our legislative agenda, we have the ability to make sure to tell them that we'd like to continue to follow through with the allocated funds that have gone through the IRA, BIL, and IIJA, all the infrastructure funding that had been passed in this last administration. We want to make sure that there's no clawbacks of any of that funding that went through. And also, we wanted to make sure that there's some additional funding for future projects as we move through this very, very important part of Austin's history. We have similar language from the state agenda on Project Connect and our Future 35. That's cap-and-stitch program. And then, we removed a position statement related to emergency triage, treat, and transport model because that program had ended, but we did include position statements for EMS reimbursement for care and suicide prevention and awareness, and that came from council resolutions as well. We also have a position statement regarding family stabilization grants, and that's to support legislation or initiatives to implement a cash-based program for the purposes of supporting residents and families. Some additional priorities with congressional session, next congressional session, broadband access is also going to be a very important discussion at the federal level. And this doesn't just stop at rural areas that have access issues, but it also hits some of our most vulnerable communities. People have just a hard time to access the internet, either because it's hard to get to their neighborhoods, or it's hard to be able to afford it. Again, community advocacy is a big deal. Housing and homelessness is also a big deal. Mental health was included because of a recent council resolution and family stabilization grants as well. So, what to expect for the next legislative session? There were almost 1,500 bills that were filed on the first day of the pre-filing for the legislative session. Compare that to last legislative session, which was only 920. Last session, there were over 8,000 bills that were filed. We're expecting that number to be blown out of the water, maybe 8,509,000 bills filed. And the number keeps on growing every single session. Just a side note, about 20% to 25% of the legislature's time is spent on regulating cities or local governments in some sort of way, and so that is the reason why we have such a robust program. The 89th session is going to begin January 14th, and committee hearings usually begin in late January, early February, and that's because you can't have committee hearings in the first couple of weeks of the legislature. It's an old, archaic constitutional thing where you had people from El Paso needing to ride a horse all the way to the legislature, so they put it off for two weeks before they can start hearing committee hearings. The legislature will adjourn signi die on June 2nd, 2025. Signi die just means without a day in Latin, basically saying that we're going to adjourn without setting a date to meet again. Some things that we're expecting to see again during the legislative session, specifically for Austin, there's going to be some Austin Energy bills that have to do with rate-setting, our governance structure, weatherization, especially after the hurricane that hit Houston, and many other things. The community advocacy bills will definitely be very important as well. There will be bills directly impacting Project Connect and the ability for cities to be able to use local government corporations and their funding structures for these types of projects. There's also going to be restrictions on city finances in general. We've already seen expenditure caps. We've had revenue caps in the past, but now they're going on the other side of the equation and looking at expenditures as well. So, that is going to be kind of the next step for regulation on city finances. So, moving on to Congress, I just want to take this time to thank our congressional delegation. They have helped us secure over $24 million for the City of Austin since earmarks were renewed back in FY '22. We started off in FY '22 at $3.5 million, and recently in FY '24, that moved up to $12.06 million. We're still in the process right now for FY '25. We're looking at the appropriations bill, and hopefully, we could get that done before the end of the year. But that has gone all the way into March or April, so it takes a little while. We're going to be beginning the process soon to develop our community funding projects for FY '26, so that will be coming soon.
Excuse me, if I could just say, when I look and it says earmarks, that sounds like a negative phrase. Could we identify the things that served the community that were brought to us through this process?
Yes, sir.
If we can look at outcomes, I mean, when you say earmarks, I think pork immediate, as opposed to who was served. If we can start with who was served, I think we can make a better case.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for that. And actually, the Congress has moved away from that colloquial term of earmarks and has now called that program the Community Funded Projects Program. So, going into the process, so during this time in winter, the winter timeframe is when we start speaking with our departments to identify project requests, community-funded project requests. We will be submitting those submissions to our congressional delegation as we get into the spring, around the March-April timeframe. And then, it's off to the races. They go to the appropriate, they go through their subcommittees in the Appropriations Committee, and then the appropriations bill goes all the way through the rest of the year. We wouldn't expect to spend those funds until FY '26 budget. All right, now it's time to talk about our new legislative team. We do have a new director, Carrie Rogers. She's our Intergovernmental Relations Officer and has replaced Bree Franco. She unfortunately was not able to be here today, but she is watching online. I am the deputy officer, and I'm going to be over state and federal legislative affairs. We will have a local and regional administrator who's going to be hired soon, and that person will be in charge of developing the relationship between us and our community partners. And then, a new thing for this year is the Intergovernmental Relations Office will now be taking on grants and legislative funding requests as well. So, that's a big, big new project for the Intergovernmental Relations Office. So, next steps is we're going to be receiving any feedback from the committee. We're going to go to mayor and council to have them consider the legislative agenda on December 12th. We will communicate the adopted programs to the legislative delegations and stakeholders, and we'll post a legislative update on the IGR webpage. We'll do outreach meetings with our delegations and socialize the agenda, and then we'll continue to do weekly updates to our city leadership. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I've got a, I know that there have been a lot of deannexations, and I know that that's an issue where I think there's a concern at the legislature, although y'all know better than this, that there were some unintended consequences of that. I have to assume it's happening in other cities around the state, although I don't know, and it obviously hurts the ability of those cities to even have a tax base. So, I'm just curious to know if there's any sense about whether or not the legislature might actually do something to correct it.
Yes, I've heard that there's been quite a few legislators who weren't really sure exactly what they passed, especially with the ETJ bill that they passed last legislative session. There were some communities that were hurt by it, some communities that were actually gained something by that. And I do think that that might be a subject that might come back up. There were some discussions during the interim as well about it. As far as actual disannexation of city, things that are within the city limits, Austin was really the only community that had a major disannexation because of that, Lost Creek. Many of the other cities that were included in the bill last time around were actually carved out eventually by the time the legislative session ended.
Basically, it only applies to Austin?
It basically only applies to Austin, but I think even then, there's people who have seen the outcome of that and are wanting to make sure that it didn't happen in their communities as well. So, we'll be monitoring that and acting accordingly as that comes up during the legislative session.
We have on our agenda, this is right to this point, we have on our agenda folks who deannexed who want to reannex.
Really?
Yeah. I haven't seen the details yet, but my staff told me that there are folks who deannexed who want to reannex.
I think some people weren't aware of the services they would lose. But have, has the city begun to quantify the lost tax revenue?
I actually would be, I can get an answer to that question. I don't have that answer right now.
Thanks.
So, I'm going to move us along because it is 1:08, and we're going to need like five minutes at the end to talk about a few other things. So, let's move on to Travis County, Julie Wheeler. Feel free to introduce yourself and share your presentation.
Great, thank you. I don't know how to do it either. Hi, y'all. I'm Julie Wheeler. I'm the Intergovernmental Relations Officer for Travis County. I am going to talk really fast, so I'm so sorry, but we're going to, thanks, Edna. We're going to try to get through it really quickly. So, as Rick said, session does not start until January, but we're already in the middle of it. They are going to be operating with a ton of money yet again, so $20 billion. We won't know until we get the revenue estimate in January what that true number will be. But again, as it sits, $20 billion, $23.8 billion in the rainy day fund. So, Texas is not going to have a problem with money, but it will have a problem with not wanting to spend that money. And so, that will continue to be, I think, a pressure point as we're moving through the session. Some topics that we think will continue to dominate, and I don't want to talk vouchers long because that's not my area of interest, but we do know that vouchers in some way or another will continue to be a primary focus for them. Commissioner Shea, to your point, development, regulatory authority, elimination of the ETJ, those are issues that the county will heavily be following, and we do see a continuation of those conversations. One thing of interest for us that we're very excited about is that there finally is an interest in continuing for looking at water infrastructure investments. Lastly, public-funded lobbying prohibitions. I love the City of Austin's terminology. I need to put that one into my brain. That will be something that we continue to see on the horizon. So, I'm not going to go through this other than to say there's a lot of turnover that we've seen. For us, that becomes a challenge with the institutional knowledge that we lose. With the developments as of today about the speaker's race, that really is going to throw a lot of things into massive change. Many of the committee chairs that we expected to see coming back, if feeling had retained the speakership, are all on the table now. So, if you haven't heard, Dustin Burrows is starting to look, I think, might actually be the one who has it in the bag, but they say it's not over until it's over. We do know that it is likely that Democrats will not be holding any chairs this session. That has been on the horizon, and it's not a shock to, I think, any of us here. Going through our legislative framework, we have four sections, so Principles for Legislative Action, our priority positions, those are the bills that we're actually trying to advance. Policy Positions, which are sort of general takes on anything and everything, as Rick said, 8,000-plus bills this session. That's really what guides our activity on how we take positions on those bills. And then, Positions on Other Proposals. So, we are always happy to hear from our partners about the initiatives that they are spearheading, and if needed, we would love to be engaged on those and help try to advance those as well. So, sorry, I'm still, I'm recovering my voice still, so hopefully, it will not go out on me before I am done. I'm going to skip through this really quickly. I just want to highlight that Travis, or sorry, counties are an arm of the state, and so what that means, we can only do what the state allows us to do. We really serve an administrative function for them, and so when you look at our bills and our legislation, you'll see that we really operate in mechanics. So, not big sweeping change, but anything we want to do, if law says we can't, we've got to fight for that, even if it's like one or two words change in a statute. Let's see. Okay, so I wanted to spend the next couple of seconds talking about the two, two of the six bills that we think will have an impact with all three entities. So, the first of those is looking at trying to repurpose some of the buildings that are decommissioned from the Austin State Hospital after their redesign. Travis County has been talking about diversion efforts, and so that's really something that I think will impact the community as we look at ways to help folks before they have to go to jail. They're in a mental health crisis. We really think that needs to be separated from the criminal justice- We really think that needs to be separated from the criminal justice system. The other bill that we're looking at is surplus property donation. This actually came about when we were trying to work with the City of Austin to take a look at equipment that we had, that we had decommissioned, and how could we donate that? Again, because counties are an arm of the state, we don't have the authority to actually do that. And so this bill would try to open up that process and make it easier for us to work in partnership with each other and hopefully also work in partnership with local nonprofits who can utilize equipment that we no longer have a use for. These two bills really are Travis County, or sorry, county-focused. One is resolving some issues around the fire code, county bail bond board meetings. That is, I don't think any of interest to this group, but it does matter to the county. Another one, deer management, so managing the deer population in the Val Canes Canyon Land Preserve. And then waste management, which I do think as we move through potential de-annexation legislation, will have a greater impact in providing waste management services to our folks who still live in the unknown of the ETJ. Looking at our policy positions, I won't go through these, you guys can take a look at this, but really it hits all of the major interests that have an impact to the county. So anything from elections, how we manage our workforce and benefits, emergency service provision, environmental regulation, growth management and land use. That really is where I think I spend most of my time, it feels like each session as we go forward. Health and human services issues, anything from gun safety, overdose prevention, we would love to see fentanyl test strips decriminalized. That also remains a priority, and we'll see how far we can get on that. Again, justice planning issues, mobility and transportation, we would love to see an expansion of rail. We would love to be supportive in any way that we can help alleviate congestion and traffic in central Texas. Taxation, revenue and budget, as Rick mentioned, revenue caps passed, but there's still ways that they're looking at trying to put limitations in place for us, especially as it relates to debt, and that's something that we'll be monitoring closely. As Rick mentioned again, technology, so broadband affordability becomes the issue here locally. It's not that we don't have those services, it's just we have a high number of folks who can't afford that. Lastly, before I am done, I wanted to point out again, growth management and land use. In addition to talking about the ETJ, there's also a renewed interest in looking at special purpose districts, so not something I think that really impacts the city quite so much. But as we continue to develop here in Travis County, we are seeing a number of MUDs, special purpose districts, they crop up, the county doesn't have any sort of hand in regulation of those, but they do have a massive impact to our constituents, have huge tax bases, and may not necessarily allow for representation from those citizens that are being served. That was it. And in very quick nutshell, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm also very happy to pass it on to Edna.
Thank you very much. Any questions on this?
Okay, I'm going to breeze through these things, and you have, you have the priorities in your packets, so you can read them at your leisure, but I'll just highlight some of them. Our board has already, has already passed these priorities. They passed the first set, dealing with funding and recapture in June, and then the other priorities were adopted in November. And with input from Austin ISD Advisory, Advocacy Advisory Committee, and we did online surveys to our community for their input. Let's see. Jacob, did you? Oh, there we go. Okay, fair funding. This is probably the most important thing to Austin ISD, is an increase in the basic allotment adjusted for inflation, require that recapture dollars be spent on education, ending the practice that the legislature has done for years in supplanting the money that it provides into education with the recapture dollars. Study on the true cost of education, update the allotments to reflect actual costs of the programs, increase the special education funding to cover actual costs of providing services. And you note, I noted that AISD is underfunded by over $78 million for special education. And then fund schools on the basis of enrollment rather than attendance. Recapture reform. There are various, very creative recommendations here. For example, commission a study on the impact of recapture on housing affordability, factor into the demographics of the student population in determining the amount of recapture paid by districts. We are the highest payer of recapture because we have very high property values, but our families are not necessarily wealthy. And then convert two copper pennies to two golden pennies. Golden pennies are not subject to recapture. That would help us tremendously. Then on public accountability for public funds. Our board voted to oppose vouchers and any other term by which vouchers are named, tax credits, savings grants, et cetera. And then another related priority, opposing vouchers that are exempt from the state and federal accountability and admissions requirements that are applicable to public schools. Charter schools. Charter schools, currently charter schools are, have to, a school has to apply for a charter. Once a charter is granted, the charter can expand geographically, enrollment-wise, grade-wise, where they, where they set up. For example, idea charter school started in the valley. It is now in many, many cities in the City of Austin. So there are some priorities around putting more community input into that system. And then also authorize the State Board of Education to exercise veto authority over expansions. They currently have veto authority over approvals by the Commissioner of Education. Accountability and assessment, establish a system that looks beyond high-stakes, multiple-choice exams. Mandate a grace period of at least one year in the assignment of campus and district ratings following significant changes to STAR and, of course, exams and/or the accountability Local control and governance, these are very similar to what the city and county have as priorities. Oppose unfunded mandates and infringements on local control. Again, oppose measures that would prohibit the school district from having representation at the legislature. And then there are also, there's been legislation in the recent past years that put more restrictions or more requirements on language for bond measures and tax, tax ratification. So this, this priority says that we oppose legislation regarding bond elections that increase the ballot language requirements, limit when elections are held, or that create additional requirements for elections. There have been bills filed in the past that would require a supermajority vote in order to increase taxes and approve bonds. Parent and family involvement. Last session, there were a lot of bills that were labeled as parental choice. There don't, don't seem to be as many so far this session. So, but we do have a couple of priorities here that would, that would not allow one family or two families to impose whatever they oppose on all families in our district. So this is primarily what this is about. Security and safety, increase the school safety allotment. This is an underfunded mandate that was passed last session, House Bill 3. AISDs, all, all school districts are underfunded in this, in this area. AISD is underfunded by over $14 million. And then we also have a priority on openly establishing a criminal offense for openly carrying a firearm on or within 300 feet of district property. Student supports, increase funding for counselors, both for college and career counseling and for mental health counseling, reduce the use of exclusionary discipline and keep students in school whenever possible instead of disciplinary placements. Protect and support an equitable educational environment that values diversity of race, national origin, culture, gender, religions, and immigration status. And this is, you know, very important to, to our district because we want to protect our children, especially in the face of what may be happening on the federal level with mass deportations. And oppose the ability of the state to restrict programs in school districts that promote acceptance and respect for all students. Teachers, oppose legislation that undermines a professionalism of teachers, such as eliminating requirement that teachers have college degrees or mandate, or mandate curriculum that narrows educators' ability to adapt lesson plans in response to local needs. And you may have read in the paper yesterday or today about the certification scams where they're, I don't know, manufacturing that they're certified, that, that has not happened in Austin, and we want to maintain that requirement, that the teachers be certified. And so basically, that's it. You can find these on our website, they're in your packets. And I also, during the session, I put out a, what I call a Friday email, and it lists, it will list, it will have a table that lists our board's priorities and then the bills that support those priorities. Because we have a lot of parents who want to know what they can do, how they can help AISD, and so they can just go to that table and see what bills support our priorities, and they can, they can weigh in as, as they, as they wish. And then finally, I wanted to mention that there is a great website called fundschoolsfirst.org that was developed by some of our colleagues in North Texas, and it basically states that we have, that in order to bring school districts up to the 2019 funding levels, which is when we were last given, given a raise by the legislature, factored for inflation, it would, it would require $10 billion. And this is all based on Legislative, Legislative Budget Board numbers and TEA numbers. And then it also has a function where you can, if, if the increase, if the basic allotment is increased by 10, by $100, how much that would increase teacher salaries, how much that would increase special education, safety allotment, it's like four things. And you can just plug in $500, how much is that going to impact these four areas? $1,000. So anyway, so that's a really great tool, and I recommend, I recommend it highly. Anyway, thank you.
Wow. Thank you all so much. Yes, this was, it's heavy stuff. We have a lot ahead of us when session starts, and I feel very well informed about what we're all doing. And, and I think we're going to have to keep having updates on this probably over, throughout the session. So thank you all so much for all the work that you've done, and we will continue talking.
Madam Chair, I like the idea of continually being informed, but there, there are some positions where all three entities share the same opinion. Maybe we ought to think about putting a communication together where we are aligned that at least puts in the hands of, of the Travis County delegation. You know, this is where we are. If this, if this item comes up, we will testify, but this is our stated position.
Love that. Love that. Thank you. Is that something that maybe we can, the staff can work on? Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so I'm sorry, we don't have time for too much Q and A, but I wanted to give you a little bit of good news, I guess. We have a student, there's a student election clerks program that many of you may know about that's done by the county, and I don't know if you all know about this, but there, this program basically allows kids who are 16 years old to earn $20 an hour to work at our, our polling locations, and it's amazing. And they never fill all their slots. And so this year, we spoke with Diana Limone Maricada, and we're like, we're going to fill all those slots. And boy, did we. They got about a 500% increase in applications. We had students from every single AISD high school apply. They had, they only allowed like less than half of students who applied could actually end up being student election clerks. But there's a little handout in your packet about, that gives all the details. But one cute thing that I do want to turn near attention to is, we actually had students at Burnet, no, at Bailey Middle School design their own little I Voted stickers, which I think looked awesome. So, and I think they were actually distributed at some of the polling locations, but we've heard so many, so much good feedback on the program. AISD has really been instituting this culture of voting for the last few years, so now Election Day is a holiday. You know, we really encourage our staff to go out and vote. We all make sure we voted, and we talk about it on the dais. And, you know, we have really good voter registration in Travis County. The turnout is not as good as our registration levels are, and so this was a way for us to really getting our kids familiar with voting in a, in a nonpartisan way, but just being out there at the polls and understanding what it's all about. And I think it was a great success, and I look forward to more of that. So with that, let's see. Are there any questions about anything about the voting or any urgent questions that anyone has? Okay, then I will move on and just say, are there any questions or discussion on our standing items which are, so basically, are there any things that you want to put on the next agenda? This is your time to share. And then we also have to think about our next meeting date, and it'll be at Travis County, by the way. And so we're looking at March dates for that. So agenda items, yes.
So I wanted to, I didn't get a chance to speak earlier, but I wanted to just thank all the staff who support the work of this committee. It's been great to work with you and appreciate all your leadership on all the issues outside of this committee that you, you're leading on, so thank you for that. I did want to just flag for the committee moving forward that we had our staff to work on some of the transparency. It's very hard for people to find this committee because it's posted only where it is, and we need, we need some system so that people know that there's, on every one of our systems that people know a committee is coming up and that the agendas are posted so that the work doesn't go unseen and that folks know that this is a forum where we can help, you know, they can bring issues, et cetera. So I did want to just flag that for you.
Absolutely. Okay, so I think we have a legislative update for March for our next meeting. And I don't know.
We don't have to call it a wait.
Oh, gosh. I know, for real. Any other topics? Probably updates on the Prop As, the two Prop As. If there's anything to share might be helpful, if they're interested in that, probably a brief update. Any other topics? Okay. Well, if you guys have ideas, feel free to send them to your, your respective staff member. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. All right, so having a motion by Commissioner Tavili and a second by Councilmember Alter. All those in favor to adjourn the meeting, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much, and happy holidays.